Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manasheh Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Crow Kramer.
Here.
Alderman Collier.
Here.
Alderman Keahan.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski. Alderman Spencer has been excused.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to report of department head staff and consultants. We have the Minutes and Communications to receive. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time I make a motion to receive and put on file Minutes A through J and Communications K and L.
So, motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Benner.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to discuss Item K and Item L under Communications.
Sure.
Item K was the election recount, and to me, this is really interesting to me because I listen on the radio and I hear folks talk about what an insult this was to the process and all that, to do that, and what a waste of effort it was. And I kind of took a little different approach to it, especially with us where we had new voting machines. And I was kind of curious how everything all worked out, and so I just wanted to take this opportunity. I asked the clerk to put this memo under Communications, and I was hoping to get our clerk to comment on our experience with the election.
Can I have a question?
As you can see in the memo, you've got all the results. And the recount, it went fairly smooth for the Winnebago County. I participated in that one. It went very smooth. And the new machines that we got a year ago, that we just started using in 2016, it came out exact. The only difference, like I said in my memo, was that there was one where a absentee ballot was not processed correctly, and that wasn't the machine. That was human error, if you want to call it that. And then on the other one was the way that a ballot was write-in was counted at the end of the night. And once again, that wasn't machine error. That was human error. But it was a good experience for clerks, and I've talked to several clerks across the state, and we've all agreed, yes, it was a little bit extra work, but it was a good experience for all of us because you learn a lot from that, from the recount. You learn different things and what should be done and what should not be done. And the State Elections Commission feels the same way, that things, you learn from all of these, a little bit how to change things up, how to make things better. Wisconsin has fair and open elections, which is good, and those machines, I can tell you what, my poll workers love those machines. They are, as you can see, they're very accurate.
So, what was involved in our part as far as putting folks together to come in and do this, how much staffing and things like that, not only from the city but from our poll workers?
From the city part, it was one day that I was down in Oshkosh, which they will reimburse the city for my time, that I had to go down in Oshkosh the day that we counted for the recount for City of Manasheh. They wanted me there in case they had questions. So, I was there from roughly 8:30 to 4:30. And Stephanie, the deputy clerk, and I, we spent about three to four hours pulling all the stuff together that we had to take down to Oshkosh, our poll books, absentee application, absentee reports. So, that too, we will get reimbursed from the county through the State Elections Commission for our time that we spent on that.
So, how much, how many days were involved for us to do this?
For us, it was two days. A day to, you know, a couple hours that we spent preparing, getting all the stuff ready and down to Oshkosh, and then the one day that I had to go there. They completed the City of Manasheh in one day down at the county.
So, that was Winnebago County?
That was Winnebago for just the City of Manasheh.
What about Calumet County, huh?
Calumet, they did not need my assistance. They did everything with their own staff, and they too said that our results came out very well. You know, everything was accurate. That was the one place where they just wrote down the write-in in the wrong column. That was it. That was all they found in doing the recount. But Calumet, they didn't, they did it on their own. Both counties, by the way, did hand count. And that's why you could see that they did not have to use the machine, and that's how you can tell how accurate the machine, because the numbers came out insane.
And we could have chose either way to do it?
The county, it was up to the county. And so, it was the counties that decided how they were going to do it. And the majority, from what I understand, a lot of the counties chose to do hand count rather than putting them through the machine.
Did they decide that because you already had a machine count, or what?
I think so. I think too, they wanted to kind of show that, you know, and that's only one way to find out how accurate these machines are, is to hand count them, because you already had all these ballots go through the machine. So, this way, you can hand count and compare it to the numbers that came out of the machine. Other staffing that we sent down, they took about four of our poll workers. And talking to the poll workers, they worked anywhere from three to four days down at the county. And they all got paid, so.
Okay. So, all in all, it was a positive experience, huh?
It was.
That's good. And the poll workers been minded?
No. No, they too said it was a positive. It was, you know, a couple long days for them, but once again, they learned a lot of stuff too.
Yeah.
Because every municipality does things just a little bit different, and, you know, you get different ideas.
Very good. Thank you. If anybody else, anybody else want to comment on that? Apparently not. Then the other thing I wanted to talk about was Item L, which is a memo put out by our engineering supervisor, Tim Montour, about the construction of Providence Terrace and specifically the trail that's going on there. This has been, for me, this has been a frustration as long as I've been sitting in this chair. One of the things that was always important to me from the time I became an alderman were trails in District Eight and where they're placed. And again, we only have one shot to do this and get it right, and as with any project. And I've always thought that it should be on the east side of Providence Terrace and not on the west side. I think the west side with traffic coming in and out from Oneida Street and just, for me, it just seems like that's the right place to do it, again, the least amount of traffic. And another thing that I've been working with community development on, or I've been trying to as long as I've been here, is that there's a lot, it's called Lot 10. That's a wooded lot. It's attached to a wetland, which is also attached to our storm drainage retention pond that sits there. And it's a really nice piece of property with a lot of wildlife and stuff. And I always thought that the trail should be on that side, and we'd have a resting spot at that wetland area so folks could just sit down and enjoy a lot of the wildlife. We do get in in that area. And as I read this memo, it kind of frustrated me even more to find out that it was originally on the east side, and we moved it to the west side. And part of the rationale for it staying on the west side is the fact that we've struggled with our city councils of getting trails put in. And when we built the fire station, the mayor made a decision to put a section of trail in at that fire station right there because we're struggling to put trails in. And I commend him for doing that, because a decision needed to be made, and it was important that we get that, get a section of trail in at that part of the lot, at that part of the development. But that seems to be dictating where our trail is going at this point. And so, all the way down Providence Terrace, we're going to be on the west side, which is the more dangerous side of Providence Terrace, in my opinion. And we aren't able to take advantage of an amenity that we already have on the east side because of this one section of trail that's over by our fire station, and the fact that a decision was made. And I'm not sure how the decision was made when they put the roadbed in for Providence Terrace to actually put the roadbed in for the trail on the west side. So, I just wanted to pontificate a little bit. I've been very frustrated with the trail going down there. When this memo came out, I read this, and I was more frustrated again, and I just felt compelled to share my frustration and let people know that I am really disappointed that we're doing what we're doing there. I'm happy we're going to have a trail in on Providence Terrace, but I think it's on the wrong side of the street. And the mayor did call me earlier. I've kind of apologized to him for not calling him back. He called me last week to talk about this. And I've been so mad about this for the last eight years, I couldn't even, I couldn't even push the buttons on the phone to call him, because I probably would have just unloaded on him, and it really isn't fair to him to do that. But I just wanted to share that I am very frustrated with this, and as the alderman for that area and for what's there. And also, that Lot 10, I've been trying for eight years to do something with that, and that lot is almost unbuildable because of the wetlands that's in there, and it's already heavily wooded, and I think it should stay there, and it just has not gained any traction either, so. But again, I just wanted to share that, and I appreciate Tim Montour for transparency in putting this memo in there, but it certainly did get my blood boiling a little bit. Thank you.
I don't know if you want to comment, Tim, otherwise I can comment a little bit too. Back in, it looks like 1996, for some reason, the portion of the trail from Midway Road to Province Link was designed with a trail on the east side, and then from Province Link to Manitowoc was designed with a trail on the west side. And then we continued the trail from Manitowoc Road to Nature's Way on the west side. And when this portion of the street came up for construction last year, we talked about in Plan Commission, continuing the trail on one side of the street so you didn't have to cross at some point, whether it be Manitowoc Road or Province Link, just because on a bike, that creates some other major problems. We did also decide that we put sidewalk on the east side of the street, so that would still hopefully allow some of the things you're talking about along the retention pond and in that wetland area as well. Would it have been great to have the whole trail on the other side? Yes, but then we would have had to have been crossing at Manitowoc Road, and that's, I don't remember if you were at that Plan Commission meeting or not?
I was, but a lot of that stuff goes off of staff recommendation. And also, when I, being on the Plan Commission, one of the things that I feel strongly about is when somebody leaves a committee and the committee makes a decision, that you try to support the decision of that committee when you move on. But I'm pretty confident that I disagreed with it at that point also. And rightfully so, a lot of us take, and I'm not, a lot of us take direction from staff, staff recommendations and things like that. And it does get frustrating when people follow staff recommendations, and then it kind of gets put back in your face a little bit, which happened to me a month or so ago on another item and which I didn't agree with either. But, you know, those things happen. You follow staff recommendations, and we should more often than not follow staff recommendations because it is staff, and typically, they know best about what we're doing. Just, and I was happy to see that sidewalk on the other side, and hopefully, it makes it in through the whole project, but I'm sure that's what.
So, the main reason that we put this in was just to alert the council that there was additional cost to do this. But I think, I felt strongly, I think Tim feels somewhat strongly as well, that we should do it right the first time and not have a bike trail crossing someplace that should be on the same side of the street all the way down the street.
No, I agree with that. And just ideally, I would have preferred to have seen it completely on the east side of the street. And we struggle with getting these trails in all the time. We're always back and forth, and anybody that's been around a while knows some of the experiences we've had.
So, the trail and the sidewalk are part of the TIF expenditures?
Yeah.
So, they won't be special assessed the street, except for a couple parcels will be special assessed. So, Tim is here if anyone else has questions for him as well. We just wanted to be transparent and open about what was going on, so that if there were changes to be made, that we made them before the design process started. And I think you also, did you also put in here about the timing on this, Tim? I did not. So, did you want to talk a little bit about the timing?
The proposed timing for the Province Trail construction will be, we're looking to start the construction the end of April with a completion of June 15th. The reason for that is the DOT is going to be reconstructing Oneida Street from Midway Road down to 114, and also reconstructing the intersection of Midway Road and Oneida Street as part of the 441 relocation or reconstruction. That's going to be starting, I believe, in August. So, in discussions with the DOT, we wanted to have Province Terrace completed prior to Oneida Street and the intersection construction, because Oneida Street's going to be closed and detoured. So, that, by having Province Terrace completed prior to their construction, the traffic would be able to use Province Terrace to get to Festival and the other businesses located on Province Terrace. That's one of the reasons why we brought this forward as soon as we did, so we can get going on the design of Province Terrace, so we can get an early bid on it. The mayor summed it up pretty much, and it's also covered in the memo, how the road was located in '96, and then how it was, the southern half was located where it is in 2006. If we wouldn't move the trail in the northern portion of Province Terrace and left it on the east side, if we were going to relocate the trail on the southern half of Province Terrace, then we'd be removing the existing trail that's already out there from Manitowoc to the daycare. Well, I guess we wouldn't have to remove it, but we'd have trail on the west side and on the east side. So, in our discussion with the department personnel, I think everyone was in support of moving the typical section to relocate the trail on the west side and make it a more seamless use of the trail system on Province Terrace and the existing portion of Province Terrace south of Manitowoc Road.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we have a sidewalk on the east side, suggested by Alderman Benner, that wooded area, wetland area be used in a certain way, are we still going to look at making some use out of that?
That would be, and I think that doesn't even end the CAP yet at this point, the next segment of that trail, but yes, we would be looking at that and also probably pushing that sidewalk back a little bit further away from the road then in that area, just a little bit more separation in there.
Why do we need sidewalk on the other side when we have a trail system, an eight-foot trail on one to the other side?
That was the decision of the Plan Commission last year, and they felt that there was a lot of pedestrian activity and bike activity in that area, and we should have both sides of that street have pedestrian facilities.
Tim, is Festival Foods, is that on the Province Terrace, or is that, is Province Terrace behind the street?
Festival Foods, their address is actually off of Oneida. So, the part of Festival Foods that butts up against Province Terrace is the rear of their store, but it butts right up against Province Terrace.
Okay. Thank you.
You can actually see the entrances on this drawing. So, on the top drawing, right where it says proposed eight-foot wide trail on the bottom section of it, next to Midway Crossing, that's the entrance on the north side. So, there's Midway Crossing, and the next driveway to the right, and then the driveway, the first driveway opening on the bottom is also an entrance into Festival. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not doing a very good job describing, I don't think. So, look at the first drawing. It's divided in half on the top. See where it says Midway Crossing? And then there's a driveway just to the right of that. That's the entrance into the back of Festival.
Okay. Tim, just ask you this question while we're here. When you come out of Festival going towards Midway Road, or you come out of CBS Pharmacy, why do you have to make a left, a right-hand turn onto Midway Road right there? And now they're putting up all these little sticks?
The city attorney can answer that question for you, actually.
And the bank is further to the, closer to the intersection. The bank has access in and out of there, but this, we don't have it.
Actually, that is going to be reconstructed next year as part of the Midway Road, Oneida Street intersection reconstruction that the state will be doing. It'll be a different configuration when they're done with it.
Because it forces people to go out Midway Crossing rather than go down to that controlled intersection there, so there's a lot more traffic that's, you know, has to cross without signals. So, I'm glad to hear that it's going to be.
If you ever want to take a look at the reconstructed, the proposed reconstruction of Midway and Oneida, you can stop in the office, and we can show you the DOT plans.
Thanks. Good to hear that.
That was a county requirement, that there could be no left turns there when that entrance came out. And Pam was the county attorney at that point.
The other side is City Appleton.
Is it? Okay. She said it was Appleton. Yes.
The bank.
Sure.
CBS is down for.
Sure. Any other questions on the Minutes and Communications? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is the Consent Agenda. There are four items. The Common Council Minutes to approve from December 5th. The Administration Committee Recommendations from December 5th for the Underground Storage Tank Liability Insurance. The Board of Public Works Recommendations for December 5th for the Change Order for Northeastern Roofing for the High Lift Reservoir Roofing. It's an add of $3,150, Change Order Number One from Manasheh Utilities. And the Plan Commission Recommendation for the Certified Survey Map for the Lot Combination of Gosling Way Court. Does anyone wish to have an item separated? Alderman Keahan?
I would like item number two separated, please.
Are there any other items that anyone would like separated? Seeing none, could we have a motion for approval? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1, 3, and 4.
There's a motion in a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item two, being that the city attorney wasn't here last meeting, there was an error in the recommendation, so if she could explain what the recommendation actually was last evening.
Thank you. This Underground Storage Tank Liability Insurance was sent out to market. There were two quotes that were, that came in, and two other companies that declined to quote because of the age of our tanks. And the recommendation is actually to move away from Ace American Insurance Company. Their premiums are, is $5,034, to Tokyo Marine Specialty Insurance Company, which is coming in with a quote of $1,979.66. It is, what do you call it? It's, we do have to do some extra paperwork and pay a little extra fee with regard to them, because they are not listed as an insurance company within the state of Wisconsin, but they do offer insurance to companies in the state of Wisconsin. And so, I did talk with the company that sends out the quotes for us, and they did indicate that this is a very large company, actually, international as well, and that they would easily be able to handle if there was a claim that they are good to work with. They have worked with them before. So, that was the recommendation of our agent, and it is also my recommendation to take their quote.
So, we have the opportunity to either continue with the current insurance company that we had been, or with the recommendation from our consultant for about, what, less than half of the price. So, it's the pleasure of the council at this point, which they would rather move forward on. Alderman Collier?
I see it's $3,000. Sounds like a lot of money, but when you drop $3,000, that seems like either somebody was really excessive or we got lucky. And the other question is, we have to do some added paperwork. At what cost would that end up being a ballpark figure?
It's already included in that.
$19,000? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to go with Tokyo Marine Specialty Insurance Company with the recommended quote of $1979.66.
There's a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item I is action items. The first item is the Accounts Payable and Payroll for December 5th through 15th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the Accounts Payable and Payroll for the term of December 5th, 2016 to December 15th, 2016, in the amount of $664,976.63.
So, motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item two is the Beverage Operators License Applications for 2015 through 2017. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the Beverage Operators License Applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed on the police department's memo dated December 14th, 2016.
So, motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item three is the 2017-18 Tentative Police Contract Agreement. Do we have a motion? Alderman Keahan?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the 2017-2018 tentative labor contract between the City of Manasheh and the Manasheh Professional Police Union.
Is there a second?
I'll second your discussion.
Is there a motion in a second? Discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'm not sure who to ask the question of, but could we provide a summary and go over the things that are outlined here?
As included in the packet, we basically laid out the changes for the contract. This would be a two-year contract, so it would cover all 17 as well as 2018. Wage increase for 17 would be a 2%, and wage increase for 18 would also be a 2% across the board. If you recall, the non-represented folks in the city received a 2% increase for 2017, so this would be on par with what everyone else in the city received. In addition to the pay increase, the union also agreed to increase their health insurance premium contributions, so those will be going up to 5% in 2017 and 7.5% in 2018. I know that was one of the discussions that council slash personnel committee had previously discussed, that they wanted to see health insurance premium contributions to be more in line with what they feel is more of the market, and that's certainly something that we've worked on doing. Majority of the other changes are really kind of nickel-and-dime changes. We could go through them if you so choose, but they're really kind of more of administrative types of tasks that really have a minimal impact on the budget itself. We also received a concession of the community liaison position, which currently is being done by a layperson part-time, but ideally, it'll go back to a sworn position down the road that Eric Zemlock had. He always worked a flex-time position, so technically, he was always working in violation of the contracts. We got the wording. We got the wording in there to be reflective of what that position is. And we also agreed that compensatory time would be paid out. We're gonna try to be paying that out throughout the year like we do with the rest of the city employees, so trying to bring that in line. And there's a variety of reasons to do that. One is through a WRS. When you make the wages, when you should really be paying it out. In addition, you don't want someone to put that time on the books at 2017 wages and then cash it out at 2020 wages. It just doesn't make sense. Then finally, we created a category of a new type of officer. I want to be very blunt that it's not a new position. We're not adding additional sworn positions, but the labor market right now for law enforcement is extremely tight, to say the least, and we're starting to see a trend go back where departments are hiring people to then go through the recruit academy that don't have the certification, become a police officer. However, for us to do that at the step one wage, which is the entry level wage for a police officer, would be somewhat cross prohibitive. So we did get the union to agree, and they were very much in support of this, that it would be more in lines with a little bit more than what a CSO or a community service officer makes right now to pay them to go to school that way. And then upon graduation, successful graduation from the recruit academy, they would start off as a step one police officer. So we're looking at that as a good recruitment tool going forward to try to get qualified folks to come in.
Okay, thank you for that. I do have a few questions.
Sure.
We'll start with the officer cadet category that you just discussed, and you did answer one of my questions about how we would pay them and whether or not we would be paying for their training as they're going through their training. So what, did I hear correctly that we would not be paying for their training?
Um, I don't think we talked about it, but I'm glad you brought it up. If we sponsor a person from day one of the recruit academy, recruit academy is just under $6,000, we would be billed that $6,000 as the city. However, training and standards through the state of Wisconsin will reimburse us that $6,000 upon successful completion of the recruit academy. So it ends up being a net neutral cost. We also lost two or three candidates last year that were already in the recruit academy. However, other agencies provided them a job opportunity while they were still in the academy. If we would pick up a, an officer candidate while in the recruit academy, they would still fall into this officer cadet, but because they've already paid their tuition for the recruit academy, there would be no educational cost to picking them up while in school, but it would be kind of a hook to get them here opposed to someplace else.
Okay, so would, could a situation arise in which we would be paying for their training, but then they wouldn't commit to staying here? They would go elsewhere?
It's always theoretically possible, certainly. This is one of those that we're kind of looking at it as a trump card. We have one candidate right now who has been working for us as a CSO as well as a relief comtech, very qualified. In fact, this person was the top pick for, for the recruit academy themselves. They have a lot of applicants. When the applicants then are chosen as to who will be in that recruit academy, they rank them, this person came in at the top of the list. So we're pretty confident that this person will be able to successfully complete it, and because of the ties that this candidate has with the city already, we're very comfortable. So this isn't something that we, we're gonna be pretty comfortable on who we would give this benefit to. This isn't something that we just be offering right out the door.
Okay. And if that cadet were to successfully complete the program and become hired, would they be foregoing any other of the requirements that are now in place to become a sworn officer in Manasha?
No, they, they need all the requirements to get into the recruit academy, and then that last piece, to become quote unquote certifiable, that is what they get by going through the recruit academy, which is now up to about four, four months. So it, it's a fair amount of time that they're in school.
And would they still be, would they still need to take the required psychological fitness exams?
That all gets done beforehand.
Okay.
So we want to make sure that they are 100% good to go upon graduation.
Thank you for that. Number seven. An officer placed in a special assignment will move up one step in the pay schedule. Does that mean that, that special assignment would require more responsibility, so to speak, that they would be paying for then?
Yeah, do you want the short answer or the long answer? There's not a lot on the agenda, so it's all your choice. I'll give you, I'll give you the medium answer. How does that sound? Oh yeah, that's right. PCBs, we'll, we'll give you the short answer then. In essence, what has happened historically is most of the people that would move to step six, so that would be the PSLOs, the mega officer, the community liaison, and our investigators. They were all pretty much at step five when the step six pay was originally created, which meant they got a little bit of a bump. Well, now we have a younger department and we elongated the time it takes to get to each step. As a result, we could have someone who goes from step two to become a PSLO, let's say, because they'd only be here three, four years at that point. That would be about a $20,000 increase in pay, which is not what that language is originally intended for. So what we would then do is instead of that person going from step two all the way up to step six, this is saying they would go from step two to step three.
Okay. Thank you, that explains that one much better.
Medium answer was good enough?
That's great, thank you. Number five, creation of an OIC rate. Could you elaborate on that, please? I'm not sure what OIC stands for.
Yep, that stands for officer in charge. Some departments might call them a sergeant. What we have them is, in the absence of a lieutenant, we always have a shift commander or supervisor on. So those are officers that have been appointed by me to serve in that position in the absence of a lieutenant. Currently, OICs get the same as step six pay as the people that I just previously mentioned, as well as when working as an FTO, field training officer, or a K-9 officer, those folks also get step six pay. So in essence, the boss of that shift could be making the same as a field training officer and a K-9 all on the same shift. And that was something that the union had somewhat of a concern of, which we, we understood. So therefore, it amounts to 50 cents an hour. I mean, it really isn't a substantial amount, but it does, does give them a little bit more compensation of the people that they, they're could be supervising on the shift.
Great, thank you very much.
Alderman, call you?
Number four, health insurance premiums. I understand that they got a sweet deal here at 5% and 7.5%. I don't want to say they're getting it for free, but most people pay between 20 to 40 to 50% of their insurance. I'm looking at 19 and 20, not to make any friends, because they're gonna have to come up, and the reality is 15 to 25% is a fair deal, so I got a problem with insurance. I understand why you had to do it that way this time, but the reality is, and whoever on the union side's got to realize what's happening in the city, what's happening in the state, and I think it'll get a lot uglier down the road. Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As long as we're on that topic, they weren't affected by the Act 10 with the state yet as far as having to pay a minimum of 12%. Were they getting to that point for the, for the health insurance, or are they?
Cities were only required to meet that requirement if they were on the state plan, so none of our employees are at that spot.
Okay, so.
So in fact, right now with this contract, our police representative will be committed to more than our non-reps are. Non-reps are committed right now only through 2017 at 5%. 2018, we already have the officers locked in at another 2.5%.
What about the Affordable Care Act? Is that affecting their?
No.
Nothing? You're so lucky. Next question I had was, who was on our, on our negotiating team from the city's side? Who was on that?
It was Pam, Peggy, and myself, and then we kept Alderman Keegan at, in the loop, so to speak, as far as how negotiations are going to progress.
Okay. Next, the only other question I had was, what did we use for comparables?
I'd have to go back to the list of what we originally talked to them about, but offhandedly, Fox Valley Metro, Appleton, Oshkosh, Fond du Lac, Towne Manash, or Fox Crossing, Nina, Kokona, and we tried to get Two Rivers contract, but they never sent it to us.
So we tried to stay within, kind of geographically, but within our demographic as far as the size of the community?
Yeah, both, because Fox Crossing, Nina's obviously a little bit larger. Fox Valley Metro's very close, oh, and Grant Shute, and Grant Shute's almost identical in size as far as, not population, but officer-wise.
Did you include Nina?
Yes.
You did, okay. And all this is all in line with where they're at or where they're going with speaking with their folks?
A lot of them are up for contract negotiations right now, so it's somewhat of a moving scale as far as who's, are expiring. When you look at the starting wage, our starting wages were the lowest, with the exception of Fox Valley Metro. When you looked at the top end, we were closer to the top end of the bubble for most of the, the agencies. That's what, in essence, this, this contract basically gives them about a 1% raise each year, when you factor in what they're gonna have to pay in addition to the health insurance premiums.
I'd say probably not. Probably almost a wash, I would think.
Correct.
For what that would be for 2018.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's.
So, yeah, I mean, to put in terms of that, I think there was some realism on their part of making sure that their wages stay in line with others, and that's why they, this is lower than what I think you're gonna see other agencies go for because of us being on.
Probably one of my bigger concerns is our officers, our more experienced officers, once they reach the top of their, their pay scale, because they could easily go to work for a larger municipality in our area. And to be able to retain those, those wages and benefits need to be within that same, that same area, otherwise you could, you could lose them to, to a neighboring community, I would think.
And I think that's one of the things that by elongating the step process, it gets them here a little bit longer, and once they're here a little bit longer, they're also gaining other things such as sick leave benefits if they've accumulated those, as well as vacation time.
Right.
Because a lot of times, even though you can do a lateral movement to another agency where, in the same way that we could, we can certainly, I have the discretion to bring someone in at a higher rate based upon their experience, however, I can't touch their vacation. And that is one thing that we're seeing with officers these days. I've often joked that we could probably offer them a 10% pay cut, give them an extra week of vacation, and the youngest of officers would probably say, where do I sign? Because they, they really value their time off, and it's very evident by the overtime these days. They, they really don't want to work.
Yeah, the millennials is a different group, and we're kind of in the tail end of having, it's not age discrimination as you'd like to accuse us of. We're, we're, we're part of our employment right now, we actually have four different age groups within our, within our employment, and there's a lot of differences to those, to those folks, from the millennials to the boomers and everybody in between. So it is an interesting dynamic to work with when you're in a management position. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. In talking about comparables, you pointed out that we're one of the lowest starting, and item number three was to step one increase, increases by 5%. In your opinion, is that enough to attract?
I think so. That'll really get us in line with most of the other ones. We weren't that far behind, but the gap was certainly still increasing. And what we're able to do, our concern going in with that is that they would like to have seen a bump up of all of them, but again, they were very realistic, just in the same way with the cadet discussions that we had, that they want to be bringing in the best people possible too that are gonna be standing alongside them. So that's where they were, because basically all the steps kind of have a 10% increase from one to the next, so we agreed to make one a little bit higher in starting, but then only go 5% from one to two.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I heard the comparables, and for 15 years up here, I've been saying that this contract should reflect what the community is getting and not other communities. And I used to say, let's start at the Racine Street Bridge with Bonta Company or RR Donley, and they're not there anymore. Go next door, let's look at the Gilbert Company. They're not there anymore. Next door to Gilbert's is Ashland Chemical. Find out what they've been giving their employees. Around the corner, Graphic Packaging, the company I work for, they're not there anymore. We started out some years ago at $4 a week, paying $4 a week for insurance. As of last month, when I left, it was around $72 a week for insurance. Behind Graphic Packaging is International Papers or Mondi, they're gone. Up the street here, we stopped at Tissue Mills, and I have some numbers from what I got from their company. My neighbor works there. Skip over to Intertape Polymer, my brother works there. I have their numbers, and then we could go back out to RR Donley on Midway Road, and none of their numbers are even close to this insurance number. 5% is not very much to pay nowadays for healthcare insurance, and for that reason, I'm not gonna vote for the contract because of this. I've been asking for some years that we try to get better in line and with the community, and that's who we represent, taxpayers here, and what they could afford to pay, and what they're paying, I think should reflect our city workers too. And again, since we're not doing that, I'm not gonna vote for this.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call five two.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. Number one is ordinance 19 relating to annexation of property within the city of Manasha, the Positive Ventures annexation. Is there a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here we go. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve ordinance number zero dash 19 dash 16, an ordinance relating to the annexation of certain property to the city of Manasha, reference to Positive Ventures LLC.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item L is the, is appointments. The first item is the appointment of the city attorney to the Fox Cities Room Tax Commission. Our current commissioner is Peggy Stino, one with her department. Sure, we would like to appoint Pam in her place. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve the appointment of our city attorney, Pam Captain, to the Fox Cities Room Tax Commission.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comments on any matter that was on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one? Oh, we, I'm thinking we had the recess and we don't have other committee meetings. We'll move on to action item O, which is an adjournment into closed session. Can we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent one, parent G, conferring a legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, and this is in reference to the PCB litigation. Do you want me to name the case numbers or?
That's fine. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
I don't think there's any action that we're gonna be taking, correct? I don't think there's any action that we're going to be taking, correct?
Broadcast of the City of Manasha Administration Committee, Board of Public Works, and Common Council Meetings are produced by University Studios of the University of Wisconsin-Fox Valley. Manasha residents and interested parties can obtain information about these meetings and meeting agendas from the city website, Expression of opinions regarding City of Manasha issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, (920) 967-5117. Contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Completing the electronic feedback form on the website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited for playback.